Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city council meeting, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. That I could have your call, please?
Luther.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland.
Yep.
Yanko.
Here.
Pickard.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Sulberg.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erdman. Sommerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you. With that, if we could have approval of minutes, if anybody would like to prove the minutes from the last meeting, you can do so at this time. Gretchen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Jeff Luther.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, most have been made and seconded. Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, tonight, we have a couple of public hearings this evening, and what we'll do is during the public hearing, you can come forward and speak at the podium. Make sure you turn in your microphone. The public hearings this evening will be proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen, ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Menominee for the year twenty twenty-six, and the second public hearing would be proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five oh nine, ordinance amending title fourteen, chapter four of the city code to decrease the minimum lot area and lot width for lots served by the public sewer. So before we get going, I think I'll just have Eric do a quick little briefing on the first one, and we'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Atkinson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the first public hearing is to discuss the ordinance for our operating general fund for the city, so that is what taxes will be levied on the constituents here in the city of Menominee. This is your opportunity as members of the public to be able to speak to that budget before it gets passed or scheduled for another meeting.
Great, thank you. So if anybody would like to come forward and speak on the public hearing on the budget, we'll open up the public hearing portion at this time. So podium is there.
Yes, if you do come to speak, if you don't mind putting in your name and address, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Darren Whitucki. I'm at N four three nine five Summer Thirty, Menominee. I'm here, our director, Julian Sturke, is town for the Menominee Public Library, so I'm here on behalf of the board of trustees. With me tonight is also Brian Segwin, our president. I'm here to encourage the approval of the proposed amount without any modifications, or at least not downward, or at least upward, we'd be okay. Proposed amount helps us keep our nose above water, and that's it. So we would appreciate the approval of that proposed amount, and in the future, I think that we will be having discussions about where the library is at and where we have fallen behind the past twenty-five years. We remain in the gallery if there are questions. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Darren, for being here this evening. Public hearing is still open. If somebody else would like to come and speak on this topic matter, you can do so at this time. Last call. We'll close that particular topic, and we'll move on to the next one. The next public hearing is proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five oh nine, ordinance amending title fourteen, chapter four of the city code to decrease the minimum lot area and lot width for lots served by public sewer. Mr. Schofield, can you bring us up to speed on this?
Yes, what's before the body tonight is a change to allow lots as narrow as sixty-six feet wide and down to eight thousand seven hundred and twelve feet in square feet in size. Right now, our ordinance requires eighty feet wide and ten thousand square feet, so this would be this would allow for more homes in a smaller amount of area.
Good, thank you. So we'll open up the public hearing at this time for that particular item. Anybody would like to come speak, you can do so at this time. Last call for public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion of our meeting and move on to the next piece of business. Under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on a topic, items on the agenda for the evening. So if you'd like to come forward and give us your name and address, you can speak on agenda items for the evening. So again, public comment is now open. Please give us your name and your address, and make sure the microphone is on.
Hi, everybody. Becca Schoenborn, twenty-seven twenty-one Nelson Drive, Menominee. Tonight on the agenda, you'll find the downtown Menominee operating plan presented for approval. After a few years of instability and director swaps, in twenty twenty-five, we are able to begin making progress on new goals and establish a better focus for twenty twenty-six and beyond. Much of our work will remain the same, like hosting free events for the community to enjoy downtown, providing additional marketing and promotional support for businesses and collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce, UW Stout, and the City of Menominee on our shared goals. This year, we established an endowment fund with the Community Foundation of Dunn County, removed the cap on the Business Improvement District for more funding, began the exploration phase of bid expansion, and restructured our fundraising from an event-based model to a more all-encompassing nonprofit model. Next here, our focus lies in four main areas: fundraising and setting ourselves up for financial success in the future, maintaining and better utilizing our accreditation through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's Main Street Program, strategic marketing and promotion of downtown businesses and our organization as a whole, and engagement of businesses and property owners in our work. Plus, we're a part of the Murals in Menominee project taking place downtown next June, which will bring a lot of visitors to town, while also excuse me, next June, which will bring tons of visitors to town while our history is told through beautiful artwork from some of the world's best mural painters. I'm requesting your approval of our twenty twenty-six operating plan, and I'm here to answer any follow-up questions you have. Thank you for your time. I look forward to continuing our work together.
Okay, good. Thank you, Becca, for being here this evening. Again, public comment is open. If anybody would like to come forward and speak, please do so at this time. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under old business would be five A proposed ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen, ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Menominee for the year twenty twenty-six. That being said, I can hand the microphone over to Eric, and he can start in, and we'll do an overview and take it from there. Mr. Atkinson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. So presented before you today is the operating budget. From what you have in this particular packet, you have included now with you a list of the total expenditures and revenues along with the combined summaries. So we had some challenges certainly this year when we were trying to make up the funding gaps. We have a few changes that were significant that impacted the budget in this year. So on the positive side, so I'll start off with some of the good things. We saw an increase in assessed value for the first time since about twenty twenty-one, which was a positive. So that increased our value about fifteen to sixteen million dollars. We also saw some increases in some of our shared revenues, so that was also helpful. I'm still technically waiting for one of those to be confirmed. I have an estimate dollar amount, but regardless of what happens tonight, it will not have a dramatic impact on the overall revenues here for the city. The other positive that we had this year, which will help us down the road, is in terms of our population. We saw population growth this year, so we are just shy of seventeen thousand people. That'll be something that'll be helpful for us as we apply for grants and also in consideration for future shared revenues. So I look at that as a positive on the outlook. The other piece that was a positive is normally our net new construction hovers right around that one percent level. This year, it was at two point one percent, which does help when it comes into the terms of generating revenue off of taxes. It also allows us to be able to adjust our levy more appropriately or give us greater flexibility to try to meet funding gaps. On the downside of things, we see our aggregate ratio is still continued to decline. We're at about sixty-eight percent of what our equalized value is. What does that really mean? Equalized value is essentially your fair market value for your property. The aggregate ratio is the percentage of what your assessed property value is when it comes to how we do taxes in a municipality. So that has a tremendous gap, and we need to be within ninety to one hundred and ten percent of what the actual fair market equalized value is. If we're so many years outside of that, which are four years, at the fifth year, we start receiving notices from the state saying that we need to get into compliance. And then if we're out of compliance again, we'll receive a second notice. If we do that three years out of compliance, then the state can come in and do a supervised assessment. So it makes us challenging when it comes to being able to manage the levy and generate the most appropriate revenue to be able to do business. So next year, we'll be looking at conducting a request for a proposal to do another community assessment. Otherwise, the state will come in and make us do it. So we'll need to tackle that. What does that mean? Does that mean taxes go up? Not necessarily, because if you can meet your funding gap with the assessed close, that gives you an opportunity to actually lower the mill rate. More on that at another day, but that's something that in twenty twenty-six, we will need to discuss. So in order to meet some of the funding challenges that we had, the real key piece is that we had some additions of firefighter medics, which we needed to add. So that was certainly a significant chunk, and the other one was an increase in debt service payments. The increase in debt service payments came from the twenty twenty-five borrowing that we did. So this spring, we know next year we'll have payments that we will need to begin to make on them. So that increases that cost by close to four hundred thousand. So what does that all mean when it comes to this particular budget? So we have some options that are in front of you, and David, do you mind switching over to the screen where we have the history of our levy and mill rates? There you go. Thank you. So on your screen above, can you slide up for just a moment? Thank you, sir. So on that far right, there, you'll see where our assessed values are, our assessment ratio or aggregate ratio, as well as our, and I'm sorry if you don't hear me if I move my head away from the mic, please let me know. We have also our equalized value with both tax increment districts and with tax increment districts, and that plays into the actual formula to create the mill rate. So if we do an assessment, well, which we will have to do an assessment eventually, that top number of assessed value will get us to near a hundred percent, much like it was in twenty twenty-one. That's where the state wants us to be. And the assessed values and the differences, that's not our assessors issue. They are provided instructions on how they do assessments, and they follow through with those instructions. It's the growth that the equalized value and those values that the state calculates is just exceeds faster than what the rules for the assessors have been written. So if you scroll down then, David, if you would, you have a history of what our tax rates are. So the upper part of that chart shows going back to twenty seventeen of our rates. You've seen the rates in that seven-dollar mill range, and then all the way as low as twenty twenty-three where it was six oh six. So that gives to the point where if you do an assessment and it catches up with the equalized value, it gives you the opportunity to lower those mill rates. But to tackle for twenty twenty-six, we had a couple of things that we put out for your consideration, three options are there. We talked quite a bit, whoops, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to kick your chair, over the last couple of years, we've talked quite a bit about fund balance, maintaining a contingency in case that we have an emergency, or if we're looking to fund something partway through a year. In order for us to be able to just balance the budget for our revenues to meet our expenses, we would have to do at least option A, that's before you. So we would have to increase our current mill rate from six point six nine to six point nine six to break even, and that would have an imposed levy increase. So you'd see where the proposed tax levy would be roughly eight point two six million dollars. Last year, the levy, or the year that we're operating in right now, had a levy of approximately seven point nine million. That gets us zero contingency. We've done that before. Well, that was a scary time, because if there is a problem that's unanticipated, we have some potential issues. Certainly, we'd have to dip into fund balance. We know that our fund balance is important because we have to cash flow in the beginning of the year, because we don't start receiving tax payments and shared revenues until around March, and then we start getting more funds in the summer, and then finally, our last big checks come in November. So it puts us in a bit of a tough spot. Option B is the one that gets us closer to our standard two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of contingency. That requires increasing the mill rate to seven point one seven mils. You may be asking, well, what does that mean in terms of cost on property taxes? So if you have a two hundred thousand dollar house, you're looking at about a hundred dollar increase per year in taxes. Option C keeps us within our range, slightly higher contingency at that three hundred thousand. That would increase to seven point two two mils. That's about a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen dollars a year on a two hundred thousand dollar home for a cost impact on taxes. Now, this is just city of Menominee mill rate. This doesn't include our other taxing jurisdictions such as the SDMA, CVTC, or Dunn County. The three hundred thousand or the two hundred and fifty thousand, as its contingency, you can do a couple of things with this. You can either do or decide tonight or decide later this year or even into next year, depending on which options you choose of the three up there, where you can allocate money to fund balance, or if you have a program or something that you want to look at securing money for, you can look at doing something like that until time comes to either enact something or if there's another emergency. So you have a little bit of flexibility when it comes to that contingency. To go any higher would be just not doable. Any questions? And I talk quite a bit on some of those things.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Since it is only about a fifty thousand dollar difference between two of those options, what would be some advantages? Would our credit rating be affected, or is there any appreciable difference between those two?
The addition, okay, so it's a great question. As far as would it ultimately change our credit rating? It will have an impact on it if it shows that we are increasing our contingency, but more importantly, the credit bureau is looking for steady increases over time. So if this body continues to do increases on that contingency over the next several years, that will have more of an impact than, say, a one-and-done. Fund balance also matters when it comes to the credit rating. So if you wanted to do the three hundred thousand and dedicate fifty thousand to just fund balance, you can do that. You have that ability and authority to do so, and then we would set that money aside that would go directly into that fund balance, because credit bureaus also want to see that fund balance grow, and we're not at the level that we would like to be. There's other factors that comes with the credit that comes into the net new construction, you know, what do we have for growth, those sorts of things. So it's a help, but it won't guarantee it. So if that's what you're asking, you'd be in the step of the right direction for that.
Sidney?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So we can see the years of the tax rate decreasing pretty drastically in twenty twenty-two, and then still dropping in twenty twenty-three, and then it coming right back up and looking from twenty twenty-three where it was six point zero six to now, if we choose either even A, that's quite an increase. Why did we drop it so drastically if we only had to basically now increase it again later? Wouldn't it have been better for our residents to kind of keep it flat-rated, so we're not up and down so much for them?
Well, I think the residents, and certainly as a resident of Menominee, I would love it for it to be to be flat.
Yeah.
Where that challenge has come from is, so can we scroll back up to the top? All right. So the formula that gets utilized to calculate the mill rate takes into account your levy that you're looking at assessing, or excuse me, levying on the taxpayer, and then also you calculate what that equalized value is without tax increment districts to get that mill rate, and then also with tax increment districts, and then you have to add in assessed values to finally get to the final mill rate. When you have a big, I'm going to stand up a little bit. So if you get, I should have brought my laser pointer, because this is not going to carry. But when you get to the assessment ratio, if you look at twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-one, there you go. You see a big gap, you see that eighty-one percent, and then now we're at, basically, we're at one hundred percent. We're matching. If you look at the chart below, you start seeing where the actual tax rate was creeping up higher, and then once we actually got our assessment into the matching area, because of the way the mill rate works in the formula, you then can now lower your mill rate, because if your assessed value matches your equalized value, it gives you the opportunity to generate the same levy amount that you would tax the taxpayer without having such a higher mill rate. So part of my point, and I'm sure I poorly explained it, was if, when we do a new community assessment, that assessed value you see, in theory, should then get close to what our equalized value is on with tits, so that, yes, that bottom number. If that bottom number and that top number match, we can lower that mill rate. If you don't lower the mill rate when that matches, you're going to be paying a ton of taxes, and then there are going to be some phone calls coming in, which is fair. But the point is, to get to your question, that's why you see those adjustments in those mill rates. Mayor? Yeah, so you can take a look at the actual proposed levy increases. Thank you, Mayor. So you can see where some of those changes took place, where you can see tax levy increase, and where it is in twenty twenty-one. That's where we'd all like to see it, at zero if we could. Getting those assessed values and those equalized values to add parity, that's how we have the opportunity to get ourselves closer to that actual levy increase of around zero dollars.
Two, if I may point out, too, we had a kind of a large debt service payment coming up, and so that's going to take a chunk out of some of the debt service. I think some of those debt services fall off in twenty twenty-eight, and that's going to help us quite a bit. But, you know, there's a couple of balloon payments, and so whenever you have that, that's a direct impact. So I think it's twenty twenty-eight, wasn't it?
You're looking twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So I had a discussion with our finance advisors too today about looking at ways if we can try to consolidate or pay off some of those loans early either next year or the year after. It's another advantage of having a higher contingency to try to tackle it. The interest rates, as we saw in our last borrowing here in the spring, are now starting to creep up. So being able to get that real low two percent interest that we used to get is unlikely. So we're looking at in that four range, and so that's part of why having the good credit rating certainly helps. That gets us that lower rate. Lot of factors to it. So we're hoping that we can try to take care of some of those issues, and we're working on some strategies to try to offset those balloon payments that the mayor had spoke about.
Well, the other thing that's kind of interesting is it's a good thing we borrowed the money when it was at two percent, because if we had some of these projects coming up now and we had to borrow the money at four and five and six percent, we'd be paying a lot more for the money. And not only paying more for the money, but construction costs also go up. So I know we kind of took on a number of projects the last couple of years, but it's to the city's benefit that we accrued that debt early on that we've got those projects under control. So I'm looking at maybe not this year, next year, but the years after that, then we should be on the decline on the levy again, I think. It kind of goes like this, and it has been doing that over the years. You can kind of tell that it, you know, it goes up, and then it kind of comes down. The increase in the population helps. The valuation will help us next year, not this year, or two years from now.
Yes.
And then, see, there was one other point I was going to make also. Oh, the increase, the two percent increase in the growth, that helps. So this is not abnormal, kind of where we're at. It's kind of the typical, this is what we got, this is where we're at, this is what we look like. So that being said, I guess, you know, I would not want to do a zero contingency. Too many things can happen. We've been comfortable in the past years with the two fifty, but this is the council's discretion. So Gretchen?
Keeping in mind what I said I was going to keep in mind all year with regards to housing and the firefighting firefighter situation, are either option B or C going to hamper that effort or assist that effort? If we have a contingency, would that, like a higher contingency, would that help?
Well, it has the potential to help. So here's an example where that could be of an aid, but you have to also kind of think on the future expense. So as we progress into, let's say, whichever one you choose, like the two fifty or the three hundred, you progress into twenty twenty-six, and if we have a pretty good year, much like what we've had this year with not having to really go into the contingency a whole lot, you then present yourself with an option where you can use some of that contingency fund to pay for personnel. So if you wanted to hire a firefighter medic halfway through the year, you can cover that cost. Now, that means, though, that you're looking into the next twenty twenty-seven, so if we have any increases in revenues when it comes to levy amounts or assessed values or just shared revenues, depending on how the economy does in the state, that can have an impact. So I would say, no matter what, it helps, and this council has a discretion to be able to sign those funds where it wants to go as the policymaking body. So it does provide you with some flexibility. And if you choose not to do that, you can do that, too. If this body is looking at taking a serious look at staffing and other projects, we should set aside a good time for discussion on what those future things look like at an upcoming council meeting.
I think it was about six years ago, maybe seven, I don't know, Lee, if you remember, but our contingency, we used almost all of it. When, at the end of the year, we got down to just about just a few thousand dollars in contingency. I don't know if it was a, it's probably the water department or sewer department. Those departments seem like, all of a sudden, that pump goes bad, and you got a hundred thousand dollar expense. But I know it was six, eight years ago, we had zero contingency by the time we got done. But otherwise, the contingency can be used for a lot of different things. The only thing about that is you got to be careful, like Eric said, that the next year, if you hire a personnel, you got to put that personnel into next year's budget. That's all. Usually, the contingency, whatever's left over, goes in the general ledger, and there's, you know, that just increases, and it makes the city look better for when they go in for their review for credit ratings, et cetera. So other than that, I'm just going to turn it over to council. Oh, I'm sorry, Sidney, go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry. I just have another quick question. We're seeing some pretty drastic cuts at the federal and even the state level just from budget things. Does the increase in even just fifty thousand in that contingency fund, does that kind of give us some packing just in case we even see more drastic cuts in the next few months?
It could, because some of our funds do get passed through from the feds to the state, so that may offset a little bit. So one of the things in the shared revenue is we receive transportation aid from the state to fix roads, and some of you have asked me some questions about it. We receive a little over a million dollars in it, and the estimated value of shared revenue that I received was about a one million thirty thousand. We usually get about a million fifty thousand, so it's looking like that may go down. However, though, even on estimates we've received, we've come back with the final numbers and seen that go higher. But let's just say it's the lower estimated amount, because that's what I ended up putting in, because I haven't received any other updates yet. I imagine I will either by the end of this month or early next month. But if, let's say, we are lower in that lower dollar amount, having that extra amount of money in the contingency could help with a project that needs to be done. And we see how costly it is to make road repairs, because people ask, well, can we fix this road or that road? We love to fix all the roads. It, it's just, it's so expensive. Just, just the, the Pine Avenue project that we saw, just. A couple of blocks was nearly a million six dollars. So I, I mean, I'm very grateful for the aids that we do get. It's just not necessarily enough to cover it, but even fifty thousand, that can help with. With a project because sometimes we will have a capital improvement project that comes in. And maybe, maybe we budgeted, let's say five hundred thousand, but we know it's five hundred and fifty now. We get estimates. That's how, what we can utilize to help cover those costs.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I think you've done a fine job with this budget. I know you were kind of stressed out. Uh, drank a lot of coffee the last couple of weeks. I'd come rolling in here and Saturday and you were working and Sunday and Dave and you were both here working and. Um, I, I think this is plausible. Um, I don't think there's any easy answer to a budget, uh, when you're of this nature. But, um, you know, any tax increase is always, you know, a negative. But on the other hands, um, and look what we've got in Menominee. You know, we've got great fire staff. We've got great police. We've got. Great water and sewer, great library. We've got a lot of attributes in Menominee that, that we pay for. So I'm not afraid of I, any of these numbers, any of these, any of these budget numbers. Um, I guess I would just turn it over to the council and if anybody would like to, um, move this forward and approve one number or the other. Uh, I would like to see us keep this meeting moving. So Gretchen.
Yeah, but, uh, I would like to introduce, but before I do that, I wanted to add to that comment that, um, I feel that we are, you know. When we're talking about an increase, we need to justify it by using it for the greater good and the public good and having, um. The increase to the, you know, the property owners being spread around to the entire community. And I think we do a good job of that. And I think the departments are being extremely frugal. And, uh, we're not just throwing the money around. Um, and I am always a fan of security, especially with the. Finances at other state and federal level being unknown at the moment. Um, so with that said. I would like to introduce to proposed ordinance twenty twenty five dash fourteen. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Menominee for the year twenty twenty six. With a tax levy of eight million five hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred ninety six.
Just to confirm on that, that's option C then, correct? Thank you.
Second the motion.
Okay.
Yep. I guess I don't have to.
It's been introduced.
Introduction.
That's okay. I did, I thought you had a comment. That's all good. Okay, so, um, Ben, does that sound good? Okay, it's been introduced. Okay, uh, at this point then we can, uh, move on to a, um, first reading.
Waving of the first reading.
Yes. So if anybody'd like to wave a first reading, Matthew.
Yeah, I'll waive the first reading of proposed ordinance, uh, twenty twenty five dash fourteen and. Ordinance appropriate and necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Menominee for the year twenty twenty six.
Great, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Abigail?
Second. I second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to wave the first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Now if anybody'd like to make a motion to wave the second reading, we can do that at this time. Okay, Cody.
I'll move to wave the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash fourteen.
Okay, motion been made. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, I got the hands all over the place. Randy Summerfield.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to wave the second reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now if anybody'd like to make a motion to adopt said ordinance, we can do that at this time. Gretchen.
I'll make a motion to adopt proposed ordinance twenty twenty five dash fourteen and ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation. Of the government administration of the city of Menominee for the year twenty twenty six. In the amount of eight million five hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred ninety six, which is option C.
Okay, Lee.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance. Any additional discussion on this? Roll call vote, please.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Bren, Brennan?
No.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. That moves us on to the next piece of business, which is. Five B, proposed ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine, ordinance amending title fourteen, chapter four of the city code to decrease the minimum lot area. And lot width for lots served by public sewer. Dave, I want you to bring us up to speed on this a little bit better or a little bit more again. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so this, uh, ordinance was introduced at your, let's see if I have it here. On October sixth, um, ad hoc committee had recommended it on August twenty sixth. Plan commissioner reviewed it on October twenty seventh and recommended approval. Uh, just to be clear, we're not requiring all lots to be sixty six by one thirty two or. Eight thousand seven hundred and twelve, but we're trying to provide developers with, uh, more affordable option, um, if they wanted to go of this size. So. This may or may not, uh, move the needle on, on lot sizes in the city, but at least it's, it's a option for developers to, to consider. So. Um, what's before you tonight is, uh, possible waiver of the first reading, possible waiver of the second reading and possible adoption of ordinance. Twenty twenty five dash zero nine.
Thank you, Mr. Schofield. Any questions? Basically, I think the lot sizes way back when were changed to, um, allow more of a ranch style house. And now I think that if we move this back to these numbers, I think that the common lots could be, some of them around town could be utilized again, more better, more better. Is that a word? I think it is. Um, Sydney.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. Sorry, I lost it.
All you need to do is wave the first.
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna waive the first reading of proposed ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine. An ordinance amending title fourteen, chapter four of the city code to decrease the minimum lot size. Area and width for lots served by public sewer.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Matthew?
I'll second Sydney's motion.
Motion made and seconded to wave the first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Now if anybody'd like to make a motion to wave the second reading, we can do that at this time. Oh, Abigail?
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading of proposed ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh nine and ordinance. Amending title fourteen, chapter four of the city code to decrease the minimum lot area and lot width for lots served by public sewer.
Great. Is there a second to the Abigail's motion? Lee Schwabs?
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now if somebody'd like to make a motion to adopt said ordinance, go ahead, Sydney.
I'll make the motion to adopt proposed ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine.
Very good. Is there a second to Sydney's motion? Cody?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Very good. Moving on to the next piece of business. Five, uh, six A. New business, proposed business improvement district downtown Menominee twenty twenty six operating plan. I'm gonna let Eric talk about this. Mr. Atkinson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as you heard from Sean Bourne here earlier tonight, the business improvement district downtown Menominee LLC. Has proposed their operating plan for twenty twenty six. It is this council's, uh, duty. To approve the business improvement district's operating plan so that way special assessments can be levied for businesses inside of the bid to be able to do their job.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask a few questions of you, Mr. Atkinson. Is this, uh, bid district the same size it was previous?
It is.
And was it a year ago or two years ago they took the cap off?
It, that is correct.
Okay, so, um, so the dollar value that they've got listed this year, um, I, can you just give me that dollar value?
Sure, one moment.
I, I had it, but I don't have it in front of me.
So it would equate to about sixty three thousand four hundred dollars in bid revenue.
Okay, is that an increase or not an increase from last year?
It would be a slight increase, I believe.
Yeah. Um, I think, uh, downtown Menominee is doing a great job. I think that, uh. Um, we should support this tonight. So if anybody'd like to support it with a motion, we can do so. Matthew?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the business improvement district downtown Menominee twenty twenty six operating plan.
Thank you. Is there a second to Matt's mo- motion? Abigail?
I'll second Matt's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to support the downtown Menominee. Any additional discussion? Okay, okay, I, I'm, I'm, I've got roll call in mind. So, okay, so roll call vote, please.
Pickard?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That takes us down to six B. Consider resolution twenty twenty five seventeen regarding Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Transportation alternatives program, safe routes to school. Mr. Schofield, bring us up to speed, please.
Yes, um, about a month ago, you folks approved us to apply for a TAP grant or a Safe Routes to School grant. Um, we have submitted that application. Uh, the, um, program requested a formal resolution on behalf of the city council. We did also receive one of these from the school district. Um, in your packet and on the screen here is a, a series of maps of the proposed projects that would be included. Basically, we're focusing on, um, uh, Oklin Elementary and River Heights Elementary, um, with a number of. Um, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, uh, and some sidewalk improvements particularly near, um, Stout Road and. Uh, twenty first. There's a kind of a confusing mass of sidewalks there, so we're simplifying that. Um, this, uh, grant is, we've submitted it. The final consideration, I think, is in December. We probably would hear sometime in early, uh, twenty twenty six. It's looking like the funding would not, um, be received until at least twenty twenty eight, uh, if not beyond. So this is not a impending project. Uh, as much as I, I like the improvements, it would be, it would be a little ways. So before you is, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash seventeen, uh, expressing support for the project.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schofield. If anybody'd like to make a motion to support this, Sydney, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five seventeen.
Thank you. Is there a second to Sydney's motion? Abigail?
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to support the resolution. Any additional discussion? Yes, Abigail.
I have a quick question. Um, so some of the RRFBs in town, um, they have like a motion sensor to signify. So you don't have to like press the button in order for the flashing to happen. Um, would the, um. RRFBs over by the hospital there, would those have the motion sensor? Is that standard now?
Uh, no, the motion sensors, we have those at Crescent Street and at Main Street. Um, the, originally there was just a flashing yellow light on those. And so the, where, where the post is and where the push button would be is not exactly where stout students are walking. And so the cameras were used to try to capture some more of the folks. We do have issues with. Vehicles, uh, setting those off, someone that's just walking by on the sidewalk but not intending to cross. Um, so we would not be using, um, cameras for this.
Okay, um, I'm wondering if underneath the, or underneath the road there coming out of the tunnel. Um, if it would be beneficial to have a motion sensor option just so that cars coming up have more of a heads up of, um, an upcoming pedestrian? Like if there's somebody biking or running?
If you're talking, are you talking about this location right here?
Yes.
Um, so we do have folks that walk along, uh, the service road here. And so I think they would. Accidentally trip it if they were, if we use a camera there. On the other side, we do have the intended location is on the right side. So as someone was walking up. Or riding up to it, it's directly next to where they would stop and wait for traffic.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, that was great questions. Thank you. Um, good questions. So I think this resolution, um, I mean, can't lose on it. It's a, it's a, it's a win-win for the city. So. That being said, anybody'd like to support this?
Sorry, I just have one more comment. I really like what Abigail's saying. Is it possible? I know you just said we have a button, but I'm just thinking. Um, we have just a very car centered world in society. And so if we could have, like, I think of a biker, like, if you're walking, obviously you can press the button, but. If you have a runner or a biker, it'd be kind of nice to flash because then if it already is flashing, the pedestrian, since it is a crosswalk, has the right of way. Is that possible?
Yeah, I could certainly work with the engineer and see if there's a possibility of, of, in that specific location.
Okay, because on the other side, I get what you're saying, but maybe if we just have it on the one, that might be helpful. Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's, it's been, uh, a motion and a second. So anybody'd like, if we'd like to support this, um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. Moving on to, uh, C, consider resolution twenty twenty five eighteen regarding. And setting polo, polling locations in the city Menominee for elections. Uh, Kate, can you bring us up to speed on that a little bit?
Sure. Um, so we were doing a little reconnaissance, um, this spring, looking at alternate locations for. Two of our polling places. Um, we're trying to get out of some of the less secure places like churches because. Um, there's just not a whole lot of security there. Um, so we're proposing that we take the Purple Door Church, as people familiarly call it. Um, we're going to get away from that hopefully and use the Dunn County Historical Society Holtby Hall. As, um, our polling place for wards one and two, which is kind of a good location for that population up there. I know it's a little sticky trying to get back there and we're gonna have to do a lot of education for people to. Get rerouted and get used to that. And, you know, it, I won't make everyone happy, but that's okay. But, um, it's a beautiful space. We've looked at it. It's very secure. It's got all the ADA accessibility. Um, checkboxes, so that's exciting. Um, and of course Melissa Nealon's great to work with up there at the. At the museum, so she's very excited to have us. Uh, and then. We, uh, are trying to get away from CVTC because they have started to charge us for using their location. Which, um, I think, you know, will potentially be a trend going forward, but. Um, we, we have options there. So we were looking at other options besides CVTC. Uh, we looked at the Judicial Center. We looked at the Dunn County, um, room fifty eight in the basement there. And then we, and, um, let's see, where else did we look? Yeah, um, but once we saw the last location, which was the Fennetti Ice Arena, we went into their community room and checked that out. It's a building that's owned by the county already. Um, so we have that security and we have that kind of. Um, ease of coming and going and not being charged to use that space. So, and again, we checked all the ADA accessibility boxes there. We're gonna make some adjustments to bring it up to speed, but. Otherwise, it all looks very good. It's very exciting.
Okay, well, if, um, if all those, go ahead, Sydney.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, especially about wards five and seven being at Price Commons. Um, is there any chance why you grouped those two together? I just know there's been a lot of complaints, especially by students, that the lines get incredibly long. And especially people like in the neighborhoods of those districts having to go to Price and wait in line with, um, a bunch of students. Just sometimes it. Makes people not want to go vote. Um, at least that's what I've heard, especially from the stout students. Um, and so I was wondering what other options you looked at, especially with the student vote handling it in a larger area. Or having more resources so it goes quicker.
Hmm, we have not looked at alternative, alternative locations for five and seven. Um. I think, I mean, having the polling location right there on the campus is really helpful, I think, for a lot of students who don't have transportation. And we work really well with the crew there to kind of manipulate the, you know, how we do the setup for each election. The presidential election was crazy and I know they were waiting in line for two hours, but that's a presidential election. You're gonna kind of get that no matter what.
Is, is there any chance we could group, like, why we group five and seven together rather than five and six is because five is north campus? So we just want all the stout students kind of in the same area?
Yeah, and, you know, originally, I don't know why they were grouped that way necessarily, but I think it is more about the, the location of those residences. Um, whereas six is a little bit further down, kind of by, um, River Heights and that whole area.
Could we look at setting up parking? Because I know there's people who have off, like, campus housing. And so when they need to come down, there's not a lot of good parking. I think it's like. Maybe you have quit trip or birds and gerberts. Could we see with talking with stout if we can open like a parking lot or something near that area? So. People either coming from ward five or in the neighborhoods of seven just have easier access in the future?
That has always been an issue. Um, but yeah, we can explore that with stout.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There are many motions to me. Okay, so if anybody'd like to support this, um. Polling locations changes. Um, I know Kate's still working on it, but, uh, we could do it with a motion. That'd be great. Sidney?
I'll make the motion approving Resolution twenty twenty-five eighteen.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then moving on to D. Discuss Possible Speed Limit Changes on South Broadway Street, Highway twenty-five. Uh, I know David was working on it and Eric too. Uh, switch it over to Eric and you can switch it over to Dave, Mr. Atkinson.
Yes, so we, we had some concerns about speed on South Broadway, especially over by the Donna Nona Williams Stadium. We've had some accidents in that area, so that triggered some calls to City Hall, started exploring the speeds in that area and then examining DOT rules in comparison with our ordinances. And we discovered that uh, we need to look at making a couple of changes. David has been working diligently with his departments and with traffic engineers on trying to bring our ordinance up to speed, pardon the pun. That's, that's terrible, terrible, I'm sorry. But anyway, to make sure that our ordinances that are aligning with our sign placement, as well as making sure we're controlling speed to try to prevent car crashes as well as pedestrian accidents. David, do you mind filling in the blanks?
Yeah, um, so there's about a six-page memo in the packet, but I'd rather just focus on this exhibit. So on the left side here, uh, green is twenty-five miles an hour, yellow is thirty miles an hour, orange is thirty-five miles an hour, and red is forty-five miles an hour. Um, the furthest left line is what our code says, and the middle line is what we actually have signed out there. So admittedly, I would like those two lines to line up. They do, do not currently do that. Our code says that we will go from thirty miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour at twentieth. At some point, we just move the signs down to Twenty-second Avenue, um, which I think is problematic. The second bit is that, and this is more just a function of, we did an annexation after the ordinance was passed. The thirty-five mile an hour to forty-five mile an hour in the code says the southern city limits, which is down here at the south end of Sisters Court. But our signs actually ended at Twenty-eighth Avenue. The city limits used to be Twenty-eighth Avenue, so I think that's more just of a, we just didn't bother to update our code when we did an annexation. One of the things that, that we've had a couple of requests, and Lee was one of them that brought this to my attention, is that the corner of Broadway and Seventeenth Avenue, so this is just southwest of the Williams Stadium. Uh, we've had a number of pedestrian or bike accidents in that location. There's an RRFB in that location. The Heights Development is about a block and a half to the west. There's another large, I think it's Sunny Days or, I don't know, Galloway Court Apartments. I can't remember the name of the development right on the corner there. But there's a number of stout students that cross at that location. Uh, that is in a thirty mile an hour zone. Based on the number of crashes we've had, I think it's worth worthwhile taking a look at, at changing the speed to reduce it at that location. The other location is at Twenty-first. We've had a number of bike pad crashes in that location, I think three, if I recall correctly. So again, that'd be another spot that would be nice to, to reduce it. And then the last one is at Twenty-fourth. We have not thankfully had any bike pad crashes, but the school district does require people that live within a mile of the school to walk to school. They don't provide busing. And so there are children that live, um, you know, uh, Fourth Street East, uh, up onto the hill that are required to walk to River Heights Elementary, so they're, they're walking across that roadway. Just a couple items earlier, we approved a resolution supporting a RFB application in that location. But I think also trying to lower the speed limit for vehicles at, at Twenty-fourth would be worthwhile. So uh, kind of counterintuitively, DOT, this is a, this is a state highway. It's a connecting highway, so DOT controls our speed. We can request their consideration of um, of a speed limit, but ultimately, they, they do control the speed limit. Kind of counterintuitively, they don't, you would think that speed limits are there to lower speeds, and, and that makes sense. However, they don't want the speed limit to be so much different than the observed speeds that you get people, some people following the sign and driving thirty miles an hour and the average speed being forty-five. That, that dichotomy of speeds is, is very, is very unsafe. And so they have a couple of requirements. Number one is that the speed limit has to be within two miles an hour of the average speed and five miles an hour of the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So fifteen, fifteen percent of people go faster than five miles an hour more, but you're within five miles an hour of eighty-fifth percentile speed. So we worked with Dunn County. They have a, a little thing that they attach to a pole, and they can tell you what the average speeds are in the area. And they can tell us what the, the eighty-fifth percentile speed. And just south of Seventeenth, they had an average speed of thirty miles an hour and eighty-fifth percentile speed of thirty-four miles an hour. So we can, that area can be thirty miles an hour in accordance with the OT requirements. Down at Twenty-second Avenue, they had, we had an average speed of thirty-one miles an hour and an eighty-fifth percentile speed of thirty-five. So that can be thirty miles an hour posted speed. And then down just right across from the Leibnitz Dental, uh, the average speed is thirty-six miles an hour and eighty-fifth percentile speed is forty miles an hour. So we would not be able to, for instance, extend that thirty miles an hour all the way to Twenty-eighth Avenue, because that's more than five miles an hour difference, by mile an hour difference than the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So um, this is not for approval tonight. Um, these changes, we do have to update the ordinance. There is a draft in my memo. We do have to submit this to DOT. We wanted to get a little bit of blessing from the council that this is something that you would be interested in before we submitted it to Dunn, or to the state for approval.
Okay, Gretchen, thank you, David.
I, I just want to comment that I think it's completely reasonable. This was my childhood stomping ground, and I remember when it was twenty-five at the top of the hill by twenty-first, and it was, it was useless because nobody could go that slow up there. So I think that's reasonable. And it was also before there was a stoplight and before Donna Nona Stadium. And so with those two things, increasing traffic and changing the flow, I think this is a really reasonable and good idea.
Good, thank you. I've been driving way too slow during those areas. I didn't realize that I had to pick it up a little bit. So that being said, does anybody like to support this? Uh, go ahead, Sidney.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to support. Or I'll make a motion to direct city staff to prepare an amendment to City Code six-three-one to adjust speed limits on South Broadway Street for further consideration and submit the proposed changes to with stout for review.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to Sidney's? Go ahead, Abigail.
I'll second Sidney's motion.
Very good. Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, brings us down to budget transfers. We do have an IT department budget transfer. Eric, if you could bring us up to speed on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so uh, we do have one budget transfer that's in your packet today. It is for transferring funds. This is a contingency fund. We're looking for transferring funds from contingency into an IT account to pay for a vehicle that's being transferred from the police department to IT. So in short, it's a little bit of a shell game that we're playing for accounting. So the police department has a vehicle that they're looking at putting out of service that they would put up for, or sell to a typically a cab company. The current IT vehicle that's being used is a twenty-fourteen old patrol car. It's in a sad state at the moment. We'd like to take the twenty-fourteen IT car out of service, and instead of selling that cab company or that patrol car to a cab company, having the IT department essentially purchase it and using contingency. So the money stays within the city. That'll eventually go back to the general fund when it's all reconciled, if that makes sense.
Perfect sense.
All right. And we do have a one, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, it's all good, whatever. Are you done?
I, I can be done. I'm done.
Lee, he's done.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Mary?
I will second Lee's motion.
Any discussion? Sidney?
I just have a quick question. What does the IT department use a vehicle for?
To get to the other departments throughout the city, also to carry equipment that they need to bring. So if they're using certain transferring servers or repairing that, sometimes they need ladders to be able to get up into the ceiling for the wiring that's taking place. We have server locations throughout the city.
Perfect.
They haul all kinds of stuff.
That's a good explanation. I was a little confused at first. I was like.
Sure. And Tom, Tom Hetzel, our city IT managers in the audience too, if you wanted to ask him more questions.
I got lots of questions for Tom, but um, okay, so most been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Philberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, brings us down to the mayor's report, just that um, the lights are just about ready to be turned on on Wolfski's Bay. I think it's going to be, they're gonna be turned on the week of Thanksgiving. Also, um, if there's any corporate entities that would like to put a corporate display down there, there's some room. We kind of left the center of the island open for corporate displays, so uh, let, let the word out that we've got some room down there for corporate displays. I was gonna ask too, the date, Becca is here on the Winter Days Parade. Uh, what's the date on that again this year? Do you remember? What? Come on up to the microphone, turn the microphone on.
Um, it is Thursday, December eleventh this year. From four to eight P M, the parade is at six-thirty.
Okay.
And we do still have registration open if any of you forgot.
For December eleventh?
Yep.
Great, okay, that's it. Okay, I just want to make mention of that. So I'm just gonna be real short on the mayor's report, um, but we're gonna just go around the room. Eric?
I've talked enough already, mayor.
Okay, Kate? Abigail?
Yes, uh, we were just speaking about it with New Business Six C, um, but sign up to work our election polls. We need more people to do so, and it's a great way to engage with our community.
Great suggestion. Gretchen? Eric? Matthew?
Yeah, just uh, one special announcement is that's a happy birthday to my wife, and uh, thank you to all of our spouses, partners, significant others in our families that put up with us and allow us to do what we do and support us all the time.
I gotta remember to do that for my wife. She'll kill me. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I was uh, wondering, um, has the city of Menominee stopped doing background checks on people applying for um, license for the various things for like serving alcohol, taxi? We're still doing background checks and all that?
Yes, sir.
We've had quite a few clean slates out there, haven't we?
We have.
Another one is, um, are the compliance checks still going? Are we still doing that or?
Not as, not as frequently as we used to.
Okay.
I mean, not that we couldn't do more. It's more of, more of a complaint-based check now, I think, more than when the chief is here.
I just noticed we've gone well over a year without any license denials put in front of us, so.
Yeah, I think more so it's more complaint-based. Uh, and, and Chief Hollister, if you want to come forward and speak on that, that'd be great, because I may be wrong, but um, maybe you can elaborate.
With the compliance checks, uh, there's a, there's a lot of things that go with those, so you have to have people that can go in and do buys for you. So it's kids that have either been in trouble and it's undercover, and then it's staffing issues as far as for finding the time and then going out and actually making the, the undercover, I should say, uh, buys in, in the establishments. And if you look at all the time spent, and then are you issuing citations? Not always, no. And if you are, it's zero dollars. So when you bring that in, are you getting compliance through that? Or are you getting more compliance by just doing walkthroughs and, and communicating with the, the staff? And if there's violations, address them at that time. And actually, then with the bars getting less this year and, and, and the clients being down, there's less in that area. We've had, have had some complaints in the last couple of weeks, and we've addressed them. And uh, there, I just, I've got a call into the city attorney, Allison Moore, for addressing those. We've had two taverns. I think we had like six or eight underagers in both of them, and, and we're gonna address it that way. We thought it'd be easier to take care of it that way instead of put it from the council, and if it's a reoccurring, then we bring it from the council for more follow-up.
Yeah, well, and I think Chief Hollister, I think you, you, you addressed something there that I forgot to mention is, the community-based policing that the police officers are doing, are doing now is more walkthroughs. You know, they'll come, they'll come into a bar and, hey, how you doing, you know, and they'll look around and, and uh, it's, it's a little bit more of a presence, maybe, rather than a heavy hammer. And I think it's, it seems to be working, because those that are underage really don't want to be in there if there's a, an officer walking through and so forth. So, I mean.
Yep, and then as far as under, a community engagement, also, we, we've had the, the over-serving class that we had, we offered to the, the bars for the bartenders, uh, the volunteers that show up and they can learn how to read IDs and, and how to work more within the system of, of looking for underage people before they get to the door and kick them out that way. And then also, that works better with us as far as when we have contact with them, they're used to seeing us more from just the training alone and gets that, that collaboration moving forward.
Thank you, Chief, and a great question, Jeff. Thank you. All right, um, Eric, David? No? Going around the room? Randy? No, Sidney?
Yeah, I just want to thank Chief for doing that over-serving class. I know we talked about that briefly, and so I heard it was a real success, and I hope you do it again next year. And then secondly, um, I know there are other events coming up with downtown, but the Dunn County Historical Society is also putting on Wakanda Wonderland Saturday, December thirteenth, from one to seven. Um, that's a month away, but they always need volunteers for that event. Um, I volunteered for it last year, and it was really fun. You get to see a lot of kids, lots of families. So if you want to volunteer, definitely reach out to their staff. And if you can't or don't want to volunteer, you should still attend, because it's really fun.
Thank you. Mary? Cody? Ben? Um, I've got nothing else to add to it. I just really appreciate the, um, the efforts tonight. I know staff has been working very hard on budgets and a whole bunch of other things, so Menominee's doing well, and uh, and you all are a part of it, so thank you. That being said, uh, we can move on down to claims. Uh, we have a revised claims list this evening, so if anybody like to support that. Jeff Luther?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills on the revised claim list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Matthew?
Yeah, I'll second Jeff's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Oh, did I start on the right person? That's okay.
Second time.
Uh, Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Pickard?
Yes.
Great, uh, thank you. And licenses? Anybody like to support the license list? We can do so at this time. Anybody wanna go?
I'll make a motion to approve the license list as presented.
Jeff Luther with a motion. Anybody want to second it? Abigail?
I'll second.
Sorry, Matthew, I didn't see you later. Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And our favorite part of the meeting is the adjournment, and Cody?
I'll move to adjourn.
And Abigail?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.